Good afternoon and welcome to the Smith Falls Town Council Committee of Whole. Today is Monday, May 12th. My name is Jay Brennan and I'll be chairing the meeting this evening. I'll start with the land acknowledgement. On May 12th, we acknowledge the sacred land on which Smith Falls is now located has been site of human activity for over 10,000 years and is rich in indigenous history. This land is the ancestral and unceded territory of the Algonquin Anishinaugabe Nation. We are grateful to the Algonquin ancestors who cared for the land and water in order that we might meet here today. We are also grateful to the Algonquin people for their contribution in making of the Rideau Canal which runs through Smith Falls. We are mindful of broken covenants and the need to reconcile with all our relations. Together may we care for this land and each other, drawn on strength of our mutual history of nation building through peace and friendship and being mindful of generations to come. So I'll call the meeting to order at 5:01 and we'll entertain a motion for approval of the agenda that May 12th, 2025 Committee of Whole meeting agenda be approved as circulated, moved by councillor McKenna, seconded by councillor Robinson, all in favour. Any disclosure of pecuniary interest and/or conflict of interest in general nature thereof. Councillor Miller.
I have to declare a conflict of interest with item 10.2 as my employer is applying for a CAO grant.
Okay, so noted, thank you. No approval minutes, we have a delegation which are excited to hear from. And Shelley and Krista are here, Shelley Bradley and Krista Daleston, the co-chairs of the Old Home Week Committee, are here for updates, so welcome, Krista.
Thank you councillor Brennan. Thank you for this opportunity to give you our latest update about Old Home Week, August 2nd tonight, 2025, just a few months out. We have secured about $150,000 from our wonderful partners who have been incredibly generous with cash and products for the festival. We have raised approximately $25,000 from our fundraising sales and expect approximately another $30,000 with sales of the following merchandise, our playing cards which are available in the community now. Soon we will have beer made with four degrees brewing and distillery with our label on it. We will have souvenir programs, t-shirts, hats and magnets, all soon to be available in the community. Our playing cards are selling very well and all of these items will be limited so that we can sell out by the end of the festival. We want people to consider their merchandise purchase as their ticket into the festival since all of the Old Home Week events are free. We made items affordable for everyone to have a piece of Old Home Week to take home with them and save for 2050 and beyond. As CAO Morris proved, it is important when he presented a 1976 Old Home Week mug at the last staff meeting. Our signature events are going to be spectacular. We have our opening parade which will include pre-parade events on Beckwood Street and post-parade events in Lower Reach Park, our Wellness Fest at Lower Reach Park which will have many health and wellness displays and demonstrations, and some very unique displays at the Smiths Falls Squash and Curling Club, our 200 drone show, a one-of-a-kind show about Smiths Falls designed by our committee with narration over the images by local people. Our Float Fest will have us on our personal floaties launching into the Rideau Canal from under the Beckwood Street Bridge and paddling floating down to Lower Reach Park. Our Night Shirt Parade and Park Fest which will have us all walk together as a community through town in our PJs and gather at Centennial Park for food, music and then movies under the stars. Our Riverbank Music Fest will highlight our Victory Homes neighbourhood on Riverdale Avenue with musicians, food and fun for all. Our final concert in Lower Reach Park will have local talent and a Taylor Swift tribute band, a Morgan Wallen tribute band who will help us say goodbye to Old Home Week for another 25 years. We have many community-led events which include a youth talent show, a pickleball tournament, women's ball hockey tournament, council barbecue, thank you very much, hope you all know about it, cornhole tournament, heritage tours, walking tours, and thanks to community services who are going to have a soapbox derby, Highland Corbett Park picnic, a fun run and dodgeball tournament. There is also a reunion dance, a pride homecoming gala and much more. And everyone can see more at oldhomeweek.com. We want our whole community to be engaged in some way and be prepared for very large crowds and long lineups. We have contacted, we think, every business and service and club to help make this a success for all. We have promoted this event at the Travel and Vacation Show in Ottawa, we will present to Lanark County Council next month, we will have a billboard on Highway 7 in July to be seen as people enter Lanark County, we have had an interview with CBC and we have had a display at many local events. We have taken our rack cards and postcards to other places in Ontario and we will have rack cards at each lock station along the Rideau Canal before navigation starts this long weekend. All of this along with regular media outlet ads and promotions and social media ads which have gathered thousands of views. We invite interested volunteers to register on our website. We currently have about 70 registered and now tasks are being assigned for each event. This will be a great success with all of us being engaged, whether it's helping at one of the events or attending, which is the most important thing. As we have seen with all town events, they are better when we work together. Does anyone have any questions?
Thank you. Questions from my colleagues, comments? Committee member on the... Councillor Miller.
Thank you so much. Thanks for all your work. I know how much work goes into planning an event and to have a whole week's worth is a lot. And just while you have an audience watching you at home, what tasks are you still looking for help with?
All of the events will have set up and take down duties. We will have our own town Old Home Week information booth which will have merchandise and pamphlets from all the businesses so that we can show people what all is around town, so it'll be people who are sitting at that. We have a huge piece in barricade management for parades and that's setting them up, taking them down, you know, managing them during the events, whether it's the main parade, night shirt parade or any of the other events, there could be people needed at that. There are things like helping vendors find their place, helping volunteers find their place, people helping with providing the supports that are needed for the volunteers, whether that's water or food or a place to cool off. There are lots of things that can happen, there's some administrative duties that have to happen leading up to which people have signed up for, you know, preparing forms that so many that the town requires of us. And so there's many things that people can do and the idea is that we try and link people with what they're interested in and what they want to do, not just the jobs, but... And then they get to participate in the event of the day and lots of people have signed up for more than one event. But we really hope people will engage that way and then they'll bring their people to the events as well.
Councillor McKenna.
Just to add, as the town councillor on the committee, just how the town staff bent over backwards to the police department, the fire department, public works, parks of recreation, every aspect, the town has said, I think the attitude is yes until we have to say no. So it's always been a very, very... They've really been wonderful and we'll need them right through till the event's over, but they've been terrific. So I just want to acknowledge that.
Thanks for that. Well, thanks for coming Krista. Do you have something, Dan?
I just wanted to add that community services and Stephanie has been invaluable, of course, and the directors that have supported us, Paul and the others, Chief Chiosborough, Paul Dowter, we cannot say how important it has been for them to be engaged in all of the meetings and sit down with us about some of the detail. We really, really, like Peter said, it's been really, really important and it's given us legitimacy with groups in town to be able to say that everybody from council to all the directors to the staff, and that's why we came to a staff meeting the other day to say thank you and that everybody's engaged and then everybody can feel a piece of it, they have a piece of it.
Thanks. Once every 25 years.
That's right.
And I remember 76 and I have one of those months, not to date myself, but yeah, and our mothers were involved in it too, so congratulations and everyone's looking forward to August. So hopefully, I know it'll be good, so thanks for coming and updating us. So I believe we have a couple of CEO reports.
Yes, Mr. Chair, we have two in fact, starting with the director McMann.
Good evening, members of council and folks at home this evening that are watching. I wanted to take this opportunity to advise the people at home and to address council here this evening with respect to the rural transportation feasibility study that we're... That's currently just kicked off. It's a partnership between the County of Lanark and Smiths Falls. As council will remember, we did afford some funding towards this project back in 2024 through budget deliberations and all that to say that we have kicked off. So the study itself, Lanark County and the town of Smiths Falls are undertaking a rural transit feasibility study to address a couple of things. One, to explore the potential of new public transit services through both a technical and engagement-focused process, understand the mobility needs of residents when it... In reference to transit, and respond to transit challenges or opportunities that we see locally and more abroad throughout the county. Some of the study outcomes that we're hoping to address through this feasibility study are for the consultant to recommend a preferred transit solution that is responsive to the needs and priorities of residents across Lanark County and the town of Smiths Falls, and to develop a roadmap to help the municipalities bring transit to life, including governance strategies and funding sources. I also wanted to take this opportunity to note that there are three different public drop-in events that are upcoming here in the next week or so. Wednesday, May 21st will mark the first pop-up engagement. That will be hosted here at Town Hall, right here in council chambers, again, on the 21st of May, that's next Wednesday, from 1:00 to 3:00 p.m. The second one for Wednesday will be a little later in the day, from 6:00 to 8:00 p.m. in the town of Perth at the Perthan District Pool at 3 Sunset Boulevard. And the, excuse me, the third being on Thursday, May 22nd, from 10:00 to 12:00 in the municipality of Mississippi Mills in, at the Almont Library. So for folks at home, if they're unable to make the drop-in event here next Wednesday from 1:00 to 3:00, there's other options available for either Perth or Almont. There's a note here from our consultant, Arcadis, who the town and Lanark County is engaged for this assignment. They're saying at this stage of the study, they're seeking residents' help to identify travel needs and demand for services as well as transit priorities and opportunities. They want you to come and chat with the project team to learn more about the study and provide resident input. No registrations required. I will note too that there's an online survey that we put up on our town website. When you go to smithsfalls.ca, you'll see a pop-up there. It has a link to the, sorry, to the online survey that's being hosted by Lanark County. You can either find that on our website, our website, or the county's website at lanarkcounty.ca/transit. So with that, I'm happy to take any questions you may have.
Any questions from... Okay, thanks for the update.
Thank you.
And good people know when to come and make comments. And the next one, CEO Morris.
Yes, thank you. So before I get into this, the comment that Krista made about the beer mug, the 1976 Old Home Week beer mug I was using at the staff party last week was full of water, just for clarity. So I want to tell the committee about a piece of legislation that the province of Ontario released this morning. It's called the Protecting Ontario by Building Faster and Smarter Act. It's widespread, there's a lot of content, so Mr. Grankey is combing through it to understand what it means for Smiths Falls. There is a comment period for the, it's called the Environmental Registry of Ontario, June 11th, I think it is, is the deadline to provide comment. So once we make sense of it all, we'll bring forward a report to a prize committee of what's in the proposed legislation and perhaps provide content if you feel it's needed. So I'll just give you a really high level, again, it's fairly widespread, but there's policy in the draft legislation to accelerate transit and transit-oriented community development, so may not necessarily affect us. There's language in there to standardize road building specifications and designs, so that's something new, we didn't see that one coming. So we're interested to see what that looks like because a city street is quite different than a provincial highway and a local street's much different than a arterial, so we're curious to see what the government's thinking about that. There's a whole bunch of content about standardizing municipal development processes, everything from insisting that municipalities only use Building Code Act regulations and requirements and not their own. We don't have any outside of the building code, I don't believe, so I don't think that'll affect us, but they want to get back to basics with municipalities following the building code. They want to reduce the scope and scale of studies that developers have to submit for development projects. So again, we need to see the details on what that means. They want to provide variations from zoning bylaws, so for instance, if you have a, you have a, let's say, upside yard setback that you want to reduce over what's prescribed in the zoning, the process right now is a minor variance. They want to provide limits where those variances can be given as a matter of right. They're suggesting 10%, so if the setback is within 10% of zoning bylaw, that it would be approved as a right. So that's meant to streamline and speed up and cut costs for developers. Whole bunch of content on DC development charge standardization. It's suggesting that they're pursuing a standard DC for all municipalities in Ontario. That raises some concerns for obvious reasons, so we'll see what that looks like. Also deferring payments, so right now when you, when you're issued your building permit, you pay your DC. What they're proposing is that the DC be paid at the time of occupancy as a matter of cash flow for those, you know, renting units or apartments or whatever. So it may change the way that we administer DCs and also report on those DCs. There's streamlining for official plans, the language suggests they want to standardize land use designations within official plans and provide more permitted uses within those There's language about inclusionary zoning, so they're suggesting a maximum of 5% units would need to be affordable. So that's a DVA, it's a lowering of the threshold from what we've seen in the past. So anyway, there's a lot of content there, that's just a sample of some of, you know, eight or 10 of the things that are being proposed, there's probably 25 or 30. So we'll sort through it and bring it back into something that we can easily convey to committee and you can decide whether we should comment to the province or not. So we'll be bringing that forward either late May, early June, certainly before the June 11th deadline.
Councillor McKenna.
Thank you, Chair Brennan. I will save comments for when we have more information, but I try and, like staff, to keep track of this a little bit. I do recall my concern, or my concern would be around getting the DCs after the development is done and up for sale and the money starts coming in. I recall 2008, the housing crash worldwide where municipalities did all the work, developers, but it was paid for all the infrastructure and then developers walked away because it was just, and I don't know if they ever did something, this was a worldwide phenomenon, all that work, the prep work was done and they either went bankrupt or they just walked away and the towns, municipalities had the development charges to help cover the roads and sewers, but without that, just nothing much for a developer to go under and there you're left sitting with all that cash out there. So I'll save it, I'm sure there'll be a way to protect municipalities from that.
Okay, also I would just wonder if we would maybe get in some guidance from AMO or Roma because it affects 400 municipalities in Ontario.
Yeah, that's a good point. No doubt AMO will weigh in on it, so we can provide their comments ideally before we bring the report forward so you can think about the scope and scale and complexity of what's being proposed.
Okay, good, it's on the radar. That's it for reports for you guys. We have no committee of the whole consent reports, no in camera. The first priority issue, report creating engaging green spaces through a connected trail network with Director Clark.
Good afternoon, everyone. So just to further clarify on the Old Home Week delegation, the fun run and the dodgeball tournament are two separate and distinct events. She sort of lumped them together, you don't have to go on the two 5 or 10K and dodge a bunch of dodgeballs, so unless you really want to, that's up to you. But to the task at hand, so as identified in the strategic plan, the town has prioritized creating engaging green spaces and enhancing trail connectivity to support active transportation, accessibility tourism and environmental sustainability with priority item 6.1. In addition, the Parks and Recreation Master Plan underscores the importance of investing in sustainable and accessible green spaces, excuse me, to foster community engagement, outdoor recreation and economic growth. In response, the Community Services Department has developed three key documents, the Parks and Open Space Connectivity Guide, Smiths Falls Trail Standards Plan and the Connected Trails Implementation Plan. These documents identify current gaps, barriers to accessibility and opportunities to improve trail connections. The implementation plan outlines a five-year, give or take, phased approach to enhance trail linkages, add key amenities and ensure all neighbourhoods have access to green spaces. Together, these plans collectively support a unified vision for trail system, a trail system that is inclusive, sustainable and well-integrated into the broader community. The documents in themselves, the Parks and Open Space Connectivity Guide provides the Community Services Department some clarity on where we should focus our energy in town, sidewalks, pedestrian crossings and also working then with public works to try to develop those specifically within our annual operational plans. The Trail Standards Plan is a working document, it's a guideline that will ensure that we have a minimum standard of development and maintenance as we move forward. At this juncture, we don't have really anything. The Connected Trails Implementation Plan is a high-level, once again aspirational, living guide. There's no budgetary commitment at this time, however, this document will guide decision-making on capital and operational requests going forward. As always, the intention is to ensure that the department is flexible to the needs of the community as we move. So what I'm seeking is your support with the adoption of these documents so we can really create a good, solid foundation from which we can work as a department.
Well done. Questions or comments? Councillor McKenna.
Thank you and thank you, Director Clark. I'm in support of the recommendation that you've brought forward and the plans. I wondered though about the, it's the Draft Trail Standards Guide, so we're approving and adopting a draft plan, so I just wonder, could you clarify again why it's draft and not a final plan that we're considering adopting?
Great question, Chair, because I assume that you may have some comments that I could integrate and then bring back. Just been here before and thought maybe there might be some updates, so we're happy to do that. If it's, if it is adopted tonight, it would be taken out of draft.
Okay, thank you.
Councillor Miller and then Councillor Mappier.
Thank you, Director Clark. Can you remind me where we're planning on locating the trailhead and the second part of that? It was within our four-year strategic plan which ends at the end of 2026. Is it possible to reverse some timelines and get that trailhead built and then do some of the other supporting work after the fact?
So yes, we can. It comes down to timing and money essentially. The trailhead for the cat trail is currently being designed out by the, what's the, where is it called? I can never remember. It's by the Kia.
Yeah, it's on, if I could, through the chair.
Sorry.
The location for the trailhead is on Lombard Street between the Kia dealership and Leisure Days, that vacant piece of land down through there that Parkview ran their electrical through to Service Development Farms.
Thanks. I could never remember the other businesses. So that's where the current one is, is working on, Samantha's working on some design for that and some pricing as well, and so hopefully we can move forward because we do have some money embedded in the capital budget to do some work on that. We can, our hope is that we can have a sort of a multi-year phase in, so we'll do something to have a parking lot which is really accessible to the trail and then eventually, because we don't believe, it is a road allowance right now, I believe, but we don't believe that we'll be using that, so we're going to try to maybe do some washrooms and water as well as maybe some electricity and some signage, things like that, so we'll be doing that over time. So that's, hopefully we'll be within the timeframe of this document.
Okay, so, so within this document now, you're proposing that in year four and five, which would be well past our 2026 commitment, so that's why I brought it up.
So it's in, okay, sorry, so yeah, we can flip that, certainly, yeah.
Thank you. Other than that, that was...
Councillor Mappier.
Mr. Chair, I'll take you up on your offer for suggestions, but I'll start with the, since we're talking about the trailhead, the last direction I thought we gave was that we're going to look into partnering with the commercial landowner adjacent to it to see if there was an opportunity, and we haven't gotten an update from that, but if we're already designing a trailhead on the land allowance, it's never come through committee of the whole, so what's the process of this right now?
CEO Morris.
So Mr. Grankey could probably provide more details, but I think I understand that we went back to the developer Otis to talk about that and they are not willing to free up land or share their private parking for that purpose. They have expansion plans for their mall and they feel that they'll be using all of the parking once those expansion plans come to fruition. So we've reverted back to the, to the road allowance, unopened road allowance. And so we're doing a design and costing and that will come back to committee for approval before we proceed with it.
Thank you. I think it's too bad because I remember that was something when the developer came to council that they specifically brought up, so it's disappointing to hear that.
CEO Morris.
So my recollection is that they were quite open to redirecting the trail across their property but not to designate parking for a trailhead for some reason.
You've got 500 parking spots that never get used. I think you could be a little more generous, but... I'll get into the FOTEN plan. For me, it's not really what I'm looking for because it's got these blue arrows, it's not giving a specific bottlenecks that need to be adjusted. For example, trying to walk to the train station is a challenge that isn't really addressed in it as a whole, but then you've got these blue arrows that are kind of saying connectivity links, it's hard to figure out what, you know, what's the actual solution we need to get out of that. So for me, the FOTEN versus the Active Transportation Plan, it's handy to have those maps with the schools and the parks and the proximities, but it also doesn't account for sidewalks on the streets or if there's sidewalks on both sides of the streets or one side of the street, which really goes into that pedestrian experience when you're actually walking through the community. When it comes to the 6.1 plan, I would like to see more specificity when it comes to what we're actually spending the money on. So like Cataract Way Trailhead parking lot preparations, we haven't had a lot of conversations on that. Would it be good to get more information on what we're spending? 2026, we've got a quarter billion dollars, but it's hard to know what, what is that going to look like when it's rolled out? So, and then going forward, obviously there'll be a new council, it'll be, you know what I mean, it'll be up to them to make those decisions, but it'd be just nice to have a little bit more detail of how to envision this going forward. Most of my comments though are for the Trail Standards Guide. It's got the multi-use, for multi-use trails, it's got the trails will be a minimum of 3.5 metres wide instead of three metres, and I was wondering what the reason for that extra half metre was, just thinking of costs associated.
It's just in the documents that I've been working through in other places, it's fairly standard. It's just in the documents that I've been working through in other places, it's fairly standard. It also gives you a bit of a shoulder, so it may not be, so if we were to move forward with some sort of permeable asphalt or something, we wouldn't have to. The trail would be 3.5, but the actual asphalt would be three.
Okay.
Yeah, so there's a shoulder that rolls off.
Okay, so that makes sense. When it comes to the multi-use trails, I think for me, in the guidelines, I want to see a hard surface used. Because the crushstone, we've used the calcite, we have experience with crushstone, it's not as accessible, even if it meets the minimum accessibility standards. It's not ideal and it's, it's not great in the shoulder seasons, it's not great after a rain. And if we're going to make this as our standard of what we want to aim for, and if we're going to be using this document to apply for grants. I'd like to see a hard surface, the only surface that's considered here, and if we've got trails that aren't hard surface yet. Think about them as eventually in five, 10 or 20 years, depending on grants and funding, that's what we're aiming towards. Because I don't, I don't think the crushstone is going to give us that experience that we're looking for. When it comes to the, the 1.2 meters versus the 1.5 meters. I thought for AODA, we had to have a minimum 1.5. And I was just trying to understand what the, for minimum trail width. The rationale of the. Of that distinction is.
So through the chair, that actually, you could be right. I may have made an error on that one. I'll double check.
Okay. So if we could just get those numbers, also with the grade, the 5% grade, but I think AODA lets us go up to 8.3%. So let's do it if we can, because it's hard enough to get the 8.3 sometimes. When it. And I guess just to say on the accessibility, right now, we're saying we're going to have certain sections of trail designated accessible. I'd like it to be every trail is accessible, and maybe there's extra features like extra benches and extra lighting on certain parts to make them even more accessible. But really, I don't have one trail system for people with mobility issues and another trail system for everybody else. Because that's essentially what we've got right now with the, with the crushed calcite surface, right?
So if I could interrupt just quickly, so with the calcite that we have right now is actually not, does not meet AODA standards because there's no binder in it. So the, the crushstone that we'd be looking at is a limestone with a binder, which is actually AODA compliant. So what we have right now, you're absolutely right, doesn't meet standards and is not ideal. So we are doing a limestone test with an actual binder in it, it's like a vegetable-based binder. And then it stands up, withstands rain and soil and snow and all those kind of things and getting beat down a whole lot more. I'm walking a lot better.
Cool. Is there anywhere in Eastern Ontario we can check it out?
There's a few. I don't know about Eastern Ontario, but I am aware of a number of communities that do use it and they've used it successfully and they have harsher winters.
To get into lighting and safety features. I think we, we started a trend with Town Square of using the black lights and that style. I'd like to see that rolled out and I'd like to see the trails lit eventually, because it's for half of the year. A lot of the time after work, if you want to go for a walk, the trails are dark. So to have that in the standard that if we're going to build it, we're going to add the lights to it and when the ground's dug up, we can add the electricity. Check my notes here. The only other thing I had was, so for permeable pavement. We've got to think about why we'd install permeable pavement. It works really well if you've got a Walmart-sized parking lot and you get a big storm and the rain comes in and flushes all the sediment out. And heats up from the hot asphalt and goes into the creek, it causes a problem and a surge of water into your surface water. But when we're talking about a trail, we're not getting that surge of water. And the permeable pavement is a lot more susceptible to the freeze thaw. It's not as durable, it doesn't last as long. And I've seen test patches of it in Belleville that it just didn't stand up in a parking lot the way they were expecting it to. So I don't see the need for that here. I don't think it's the right tool. And especially since most of the trails are right beside the waterway, drainage shouldn't be an issue from trying to get groundwater infiltration. Because the groundwater table, the table. The groundwater table is high, so it's not, it's just going into the river eventually anyway, but there's added cost for that. When there's. There's no, yeah, the other thing, there's no plan to connect between the cat trail and the Ottawa Valley Trail in this, which long-term I'd really like to see. And there's no standard or plan for some kind of winter maintenance for those connecting parts of our trail that do. Form important transportation links when we look at the FOTEN stuff. If we're not winter maintaining them, we're coming up with a plan to eventually winter maintain them. They're really not, they're only part of that length for six months of the year, so. Is what I got out of the report tonight.
Thanks for that. Anybody else?
I'll just go back, interesting review. I would like, I would like the support. That we do, and I think our goal is to have all ODA accessible trails, those suggestions were interesting to me. And I would, I'm sure it's built it in, but explicit if it means lighting were to, to make that happen. Then I would support Counselor McQuire's comment. And the other one was, I know it's much more complicated and I hope it's on our radar to connect the OVRT trail. Some out to the Cataract Way Trail. I'd be, if it's not here, at least we find a footholder in Silverland. You know, that is an objective, our goal, maybe haven't figured it out yet, but we need to do that. I think it's really important. Thank you.
Mayor Cox? Mayor Pecor?
Sure, thank you. I have similar comments, I guess, in my mindset. The winter maintenance is one certainly. Hard surface obviously probably easier to maintain in the winter, but I'm interested in learning more about stone chip and that with the agent, the bonding agent attached to it. And how it's used and over the long run. The amount of maintenance required for that versus a hard surface. I know a hard surface would be harder, more expensive to start with, but I'm wondering about. That's maintenance cost over the lifespan of it, I guess is a thought. And what about boardwalks? Is that, was that considered at all as, as a possibility in certain areas of a trail?
So just two pieces. I'll address the maintenance plan first, or the winter maintenance plan. At this point, our parks are actually closed between Thanksgiving and May long weekend, which is coming up. So there is no winter maintenance because we just don't have people and we don't have the capacity to do it. It's not simply that it's stoned us trails. Because when you open up the parks, obviously there's a lot more things we need to be considering. So if there is a desire to open up the parks full season, that's, we can, we can look at that, but that's fundamentally a different staffing component. And it's also, there's, there's a lot of pieces there. The, to go back to the different sort of types of accessibility. There are some trails that you cannot actually physically make accessible and those are the sort of the hiking trails, the, through the forest and those types of things. And that, so that's the distinction within this document. If there needs to be some clarification, I can, I can suss that out a little bit more. The intention of this document is to provide us direction around how to build the trail from Lower Reach up to Victoria Park through. Those are the trails we're specifically speaking about, also making those links. And then thinking about in terms of the longevity, in terms of the standard with, with. Permeable, sorry, non-permeable asphalt, asphalt trails versus stonex, I think we can certainly look into that. The cost is significant for an asphalt overlay. It's three to four times the price per kilometer. If not more, based on the, the pricing that we got last, last summer. And boardwalks, I love them, but they do take a lot of maintenance and they take a beating, but we could look at them. But we have approximately 17 kilometers trails currently that are active. We'd like to extend that out to about 22 kilometers of trail. And so if you just cost that out, it's, it's significant. Boardwalks typically also, they, they require more, more intensive management and on. They're difficult to manage in the winter as well. So they're not always the best, but they're also not always the worst. And so we can include, there's a couple of spots we're actually talking about it over some, some waterways that are a little bit challenging.
And then lighting. And again, I think it's reinforced the. Especially that section from Victoria Park down through Lower Reach would be, I mean, it's, it's, it's a great, it's an attractive area to walk in. Again, thinking of our, our shoulder seasons, even with winter maintenance, people still walk through there until there's too much soil to walk through there. And with the days being short, the time of the year, having lighting around that would be very desirable. And. Trail connectivity, same thing, I agree, trying to connect the, the OVRT to the cat trail through trail networks in town would be ideal. It's been on the back burner for a number of years and if there's a way of getting some cooperation with, with CP. And the, the old, I guess, underpass, it's north end of town, a way of getting through that. And creating even a tunnel that could be suitable for recreational use would be ideal. Maybe not open up to what was there before, but at least make it suitable. And final question, comment, just grants. And I think that the availability of grants, successful grant applications will probably help drive the progress of this entire project. And is this something that you're looking into pursuing now?
Absolutely.
And what type of opportunities are out there?
That's a great question. So if I may, the, currently we have, that we've applied to is the Active Transportation Fund. There was a focus on making trails accessible, things like that. So we applied for, I think, 1.5 million under that. That will hopefully go a long ways to doing some of the very things that we're talking about here. Back to Councilor McKenna's comment, full disclosure, the OVRT was excluded because I had no idea how to make it work. So I think your, your comment actually is helpful because then we can make a placeholder within the document to say this is something we need to consider. We are considering it, is on the radar. We just, I don't have a tunneling machine to tunnel and so we're not sure how to, how to make it work. But we can add that back in, so, or into the documents, that, that's fine. But we are, as grants come up, we're, we're seeking them. There's a lot of, not a lot, but there's a significant number of, of grants that are. Coming forward in smaller amounts as well that we're looking for. Some are coming from corporations and some are coming from the government. So we're, we're trying to chase those as well to do what we can.
Okay, and final comment, just more to Director McMon, just and, and supporting Councilor McQuire's thoughts regarding. Access to the train station. I mean, you're not, you may ultimately someday have a train station further out and a bigger station, we don't know yet. But the reality is for the foreseeable future, this is where it is. And, and seeing people walking from there along Union in the wintertime, struggling with a suitcase. If we can get some better support for pedestrians in that area, it would be really important.
I just did it in the rain the other day, so I agree.
Okay, okay. Now that you're all bored, we'll get her done.
Well, hopefully that's up to Paul.
Thank you.
Councilor Quinn?
Just briefly with Cataract Way Trail, I know you've been working with them. And they're very anxious to hear about the trailhead and what's happening. And I also have taken it upon myself just to talk to a few contractors about maybe donating. Some benches. With them being able to put a plaque on saying this is donated by. So you know what? I think there's a lot of interest there and this is really good bringing this forward so people hear. What, what we're planning and, and can start to get their minds around it. So I really appreciate all the work that you're doing. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Every time you come here, you use the word aspirational.
Yeah, that's because you said you liked it once.
So this is, this is a roadmap and there's been great comments put forward about sort of not getting in the weeds. On specifics, which is good. So I, you know, I support. I would support adopting this, knowing that in fact, this is probably can be termed a living document. Incorporating some of the things, so, but as is, I, I would support it, knowing that this council or the next council. All likelihood, a lot of it will be decided there. So, but this is a roadmap for me and I'm, I'm happy to support it. Tonight, and I think that's what you're looking for, to adopt it and then bring it to a council meeting next week.
Thank you, Ben. It's a, a trail map.
A trail map. So I'm happy to do that. Councilor McQuire?
So just to clarify, we'll get the edits between now and next week and then we can go forward next week.
Everyone good with that? We're good?
I'll pencil it in. Thank you.
Thanks. Okay, so. Ten point two, Councilor Miller is leaving us as she's declared conflict. And we have our able-bodied planning clerk, Elmsley here to. How's about the CIP?
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. 2025 CIP Spring Intake brought in nine applications. Covering a variety of improvements as outlined in my report, but I'm only going to give a brief overview of each application. And the working committee and planning staff recommendations. The, the first property is 18 William Street East, which is Jules Gently Used Clothing owned by Big Brothers and Big Sisters. They're proposing to remove the paint by sandblasting the paint off and restoring the brick on the front of the building. Add automatic door openers to the front entrance doors and install a timber frame awning or a canopy. Over the entrance. The CIP Working Committee noted that the return to brick on the street and the look and the feel of the material for the canopy. Would be very complimentary to that streetscape. The project cost is $47,067 and recommended funding is $14,068. Next is eight to 12 Main Street West. The, this application went through a bit of an evolution as outlined in my report. The owner, after submitting his application for flashing, had to replace the flashing that came away from the building due to wind and birds. But not just that top piece, the piece that was underneath that decorative piece as well. The working committee did debate this project as being either maintenance-related, but they did decide that the overall impact. Represents an improvement to the building and certainly immediately improves the safety of it. The project cost is $6,622. Funding recommended is half at 3311. 12 Maple Street, the Artisan Village had CIP funding in 2023 and 2024. However, last year's project included some roof repairs. That were part of the project that was not complete because repairs were found to be more extensive than what they originally thought. So the owner is requesting funding for the new roof at $83,620. The committee is recommending that although it is a project eligible under Program 14. They're giving priority for funding for newer applicants as per the CIP criteria. Next is 53 Victoria Street, the Station Theater. The applicant is looking to install auto door openers on those very heavy bathroom doors. And to put emergency call buttons in each of the bathrooms. It's a good improvement to this public venue. The project cost is $11,487 with recommended funding at $5,743. Two to six Beckwith Street, the applicant is looking to remove that awning to repair the stucco underneath. And paint that area to match the rest of the building. And they'll add in six goose neck lights along the Beckwith Street side and two along the main street side of the building. In my proposal, or in the report, I had used a rendering from the ivy and iron and ivory. Renderings, but that was for reference only, just to show where the lights go and colors. The business tenants will be responsible for signage and that's not included in the application. The committee agreed that this project represents an improvement and is eligible for funding on condition that the paint color used be a light gray or beige. And that they consider using that for the whole building, not just that little portion where it's going. Project cost $15,119 and recommended funding is $7560. Levin William Street West, this owner is looking at making a lot of upgrades to this property that include a new front porch. Noting that the owner had considered repairing that porch. But the finish and the structure were beyond repair, so they're looking at full replacement. Adding in accessibility ramps at entrance, new accessible doors, widening interior doorways, modifying public bathrooms for accessibility. Repairing the masonry, the, replacing some fascia, corbels and wood sockets that needed. Installing energy-efficient windows and upgrading the electrical, plumbing and HVAC. The owner is adding in a one-bedroom unit on the ground floor that'll probably require a minor variance application. The commercial space will be reduced to accommodate that new apartment. The committee determined that this property would look more commercial on the ground floor once the business tenants are secured. And proper signage is put in place and the committee is recommending. Full funding for the project, noting that it's reduced under Program 14, just because of budget availability. Thirty to forty-eight Beckwith Street, the owner is going to remove all the crumbling wall. It's some kind of boarding material made to look like brick. And replace it with a durable stucco treatment done in layers. It's not clear what the original building material was underneath. We did get some photos from Heritage House Museum, but the angle wasn't quite, quite what we needed to in order to try and determine what that material was. The committee debated this application and finally determined to recommend it for full. The committee debated this application and finally determined to recommend it for full funding as it does represent an improvement over that full brick boarding that's currently there. Project cost twenty-eight thousand five forty-nine, recommended funding is ten thousand. Forty-one Market Street, Trinity Church, the applicant is going to add an exterior ramp and install new accessible door to the gymnasium, which is the, if you're facing the front of the church, the entrance door is there, it's the one on the left. And then add another ramp inside to get down into the gym. These, there are lots of classes and community events held in this part of the church on a regular basis. So improved accessibility is a win for everybody. Project cost sixty-nine thousand eight ninety-one, recommended funding twenty-seven four three five. Last and not least, one to three Williams Street East is Ease Chiropractic. This owner is going to make repairs to those parts of the acrylic stucco wall that is crumbling in places. They want to put in a new insert into the existing sign at the front of the building and add in a new sign on the side of the building. The committee does not recommend funding the new inserts in the sign at the front door because it doesn't represent an improvement. But the committee is recommending approval of the signage on the side of the building as it meets criteria with the downtown core guidelines and the wall repairs as they make an improvement. Project cost thirteen nine one four, funding forty-five seventy. It's worth noting, I think, that the committee did debate the more maintenance related projects and that as the C I P is written in very high level terms, they felt that the improvements made the building safer and more functional and allowed for C I P evaluation criteria. Just wrap up by saying the total funding requests were two hundred and five thousand and change and staff is recommending a hundred and fifty thousand five hundred thirty-nine, which is our budget. Note on, sorry, note on page one of my report that there's a typo in the second recommendation, number four for eleven William West. It's under Program two, reads twelve four thirty-five, it should read fifteen thousand. Thank you very much. Happy for any comments or questions.
Questions, Council McGuire?
Mr. Chair, thanks, Bree. It's a well put together report that makes it nice and clear. I've got some comments on the different ones. Is it okay to just kind of go through it one by one or how, what's the best way to do it?
Yeah, I guess so. I don't know if anyone else has any comments on the report in general and then we could come back. Is that okay?
Yeah.
So, Mr. Robson?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Well done. I've, I've read it. It falls within the guidelines set forth and I'm going to support the staff recommendation.
Okay, anybody else? Any comment in general?
No, more specific.
Okay. Okay, so I'll just, maybe I'll start with the, I'll just chime in and say I'm fine with it. Echo Council Robinson's comments. So the Big Brothers and Big Sisters building, is there any comments on that? Council McGuire?
So I just, I'll frame this in a positive mindset. I have opportunities that we could save the taxpayer money tonight. Yeah, you don't look at this, but okay, did you? Sandblasting the paint, the painting the masonry in the downtown core or anywhere is the single most destructive thing you can do to a masonry surface because it traps the moisture in. And we could all think of a building downtown or otherwise, it's got the bricks peeling apart because it's been painted. So very exciting to see Big Brothers, Big Sisters coming in and wanting to get the paint off their building. My own, and I think this could be a really great example of, for other buildings that are trying to do this, if the work's done correctly. I'm nervous that the sandblasting is going to take the finish off the outer layer of the brick. And if the finish comes off the outer layer of the brick, then there's going to be greater deterioration in the long run. So I just, I'm wondering if we could get more information or just see if there's other options that they could go to, but fully support the ask. I think it's a great, great application and well deserving and maybe it'll come back that they'll, they could, well, I guess they're maxed out at the ten thousand anyway, but just to make sure that they're not going to have bigger problems down the line for, for that one.
Eighteen William?
I'm good with that.
I'm good with it. Everyone's good with, okay. So eight twelve Main?
I'll go first this time?
Yeah, sure.
Okay. It's, it's maintenance and so I have heard time, it's something that should have been, probably should have been looked after a long time ago on the building. What's, is, what was there before was far more ornamental than what it's been replaced with. So I do struggle with this one. I know that it's not a huge amount of money, but it's still, I don't, I don't, don't necessarily view the C I P as something that should cover regular maintenance.
Okay. Council McGuire?
So I don't support this one. This is taking a heritage attribute that fell down in a windstorm and replacing it with the cheapest material you can get. And the whole reason that we have this C I P program or the main reason was to get our downtown looking the way it used to look when all of these attributes were maintained. So the fact that this work has already been completed, that used to be a major criteria for C I P. Would the work be done without the grant? Well, the work had to be done because it blew off and it's been replaced. It's been replaced with something that's not sympathetic to the character of the building. It doesn't meet the downtown design guidelines, it doesn't meet anything we're working on through the Heritage Conservation District work and it doesn't meet any of the municipal heritage objectives. So even though it's a small project or a small ask, I think out of principle, there's, we've turned down, we've turned down similar things like this before and I think that we need to look at the policy of why this stuff is getting through the procedure because we keep having these conversations when it, when it comes to committee. So it's a hard no for this one for me.
Okay. Council McKenna or Council Quinn?
Sure, I think through Mayor's comments and Council McGuire's comments, I'm comfortable not supporting this.
Okay. Okay, so that's the three to three. I would, I would defer to you guys. I know I was sort of broad braced everything, but I agree with you now. So that one would be a no. Twelve Maple, that's three times in two years or something like that, so. And that was recognized by the committee, so.
Just to confirm, so that's a no, even if other funding opens up?
Well, I would imagine they would have to re-reply with it.
The way, through you, Chair, the way the committee made the recommendation is that if funds open up, that you consider this one. So you'd need to determine whether or not to take that off the table or not.
It would still come back.
It could still, it'd still have to come back here. Right?
I would just say my two cents if the proponents watching. We've spent a lot of money on this building and the work that's being proposed, for me, is similar to the air handling equipment that we didn't approve in the previous round because this is maintenance. This is, the roof needs to be fixed. There's nothing ornamental about the roof, there's nothing environmentally. It's not like there's solar panels going on it or just doesn't check enough boxes. So I wouldn't support it even if it does come back and.
I'm too.
I agree.
Agree, agree, agree. Okay, so that's off. Okay. The Station Theater, thumbs up.
It's great to see.
Jebbs Creek Building or on Beckwood Street. Council McGuire?
So this one, I'm really excited to see the awning come down. And the lighting should look really good there. The only concern I've got with this one is stucco, which is not a material we've got in our downtown design guidelines. So we've got wood paneling, we've got different material, masonry elements that are sympathetic to the surrounding architecture. But the stucco, and we see this continuing on the other applications, it's not durable because it's constantly needing to be repaired as we can see on the last, the last application. So I would support the upper part. I'd really encourage the business owner when they're doing their signage to apply for a round two because hopefully they could get some money for the new signs. But I don't support the stucco aspect of it and maybe there'd be a way to work with them to improve that or, or take that out of the grant.
Council McKenna?
Yeah, I just, I see that it's repairing the existing stucco and then painting it. So I think it would be a much bigger job for them to remove it all. I think, so I'm comfortable supporting it as it is. It's not, if they were starting from scratch, I wouldn't support stucco, but.
Council Robinson?
Thank you. Yeah, I'm in agreement with Councilman McKenna. The, I personally, if it looks anything like it does in the picture, that's going to be a definite improvement to Beckwood Street. So I, I'm going to support that.
So eleven William Street?
I have another comment.
Oh, okay, go ahead.
I just want to say it's not going to look anything like the picture because it's wood panels in the picture with the, like the rectangular shaping. So, so that's my point. It's just, we're not funding regular maintenance. We should be funding improvements. Stucco is the maintenance of what they've put up. If we're subsidizing low quality materials that are failing constantly, we're just continuing the problem that we were trying to solve. So I'm still against that one, but.
Okay, thanks for that. We're going to move on. Eleven William Street, the mixed use property adjacent to seven Maple Apartments. Comments? Yep, go ahead. You go first this time and then, go ahead.
Okay, I don't support this one. We've got a heritage porch that I went by today and is nowhere close to being beyond repair. And we've had heritage porches in town in a lot worse shape that have been fixed up. It might need a new floor, but it's had its floor replaced in the past and you can easily support it while you replace the floor and keep the, the columns and banisters. But the worst part of it is what they're proposing to replace it with is a very cheap materials. It's very modern and it doesn't fit the character of the property at all. So for the Program One, there's nothing to say you couldn't make that porch accessible by extending a ramp out towards the sidewalk, which I would be fully supportive of. But, but I, I don't see why the town would, would subsidize someone to tear down their heritage porch. When it comes to the, when it comes to the front side and rear facade work, I'm not sure, like, we don't have enough information to know, it says install flashing is required. I don't know why the flashing would be required, but, and what the proper soffit venting would entail. To replace the wood and the corbels could be good, but we need more information on how they're going to finish it and how they're going to complete the work. When it comes to the windows, right now, we've got a two-tone window with a very unique composition of the panes. And what they're proposing is just a modern window with a one over one, it doesn't, it doesn't match what used to be there, it doesn't. And I don't know that they're going to get the energy savings out of changing those windows that, that makes it worth the investment. So I don't see that a good spend on the town's part in this one. When it comes to the electrical and the interior stuff that I'm supportive of, but just the way the exterior stuff's presented today, I don't support any of it.
Thanks. Mayor Pacquiao?
Yeah, I struggle with this one as well. I've been in the building probably a couple hundred times. Get my haircut there. I, I don't understand the motivation necessarily to create, for that kind of money to create one accessible unit. And, and that small commercial, that small space in the front, I'm confused here whether it's partially commercial, partially residential. The front unit is, if I recall, like two rooms. I mean, I don't know how we squeeze an apartment and a commercial unit in there. And that's a lot of money, like forty-three thousand dollar cost to widen doors and modify existing bathrooms. There might be one bathroom in there, I'm not sure what doors are in there. I agree with some of the porch. I haven't, I haven't assessed a porch, I'm not qualified to assess a porch. But what, what's been proposed is detracts, I think, from the building more so than what's there today. So I, there's so many pieces of this that I struggle with and don't agree with. The, yeah, electrical upgrades, I mean, what is there now? Is it a hundred amp service? Is it sixty? Is it new, an oven tube? I suspect it's not an oven tube, but.
Includes new two hundred amp service. Well, I'm not sure what's there now, it's just bringing it up.
Generally, for which unit? Because there's.
The commercial components, or the commercial component of the building. So, sorry, through you, Chair. He's looking at two commercial units on the ground floor and that's what the, that's what it says in the quote.
Two, two commercial on the ground floor and one residential?
Yes.
Okay, I, I, I wouldn't want to make a decision on this one tonight and any element of it. I prefer to get more information. I mean, I'm much, I don't know how many electrical services are to the building now. Cause I know there's apartments upstairs, there's one apartment upstairs. And I'm not sure what would justify two hundred amp service for small units. And is, and I'm not sure how they're going to squeeze in two commercial and residential unit in that. I'd like to see some floor plans and some details.
Okay.
Big ask.
It is a big ask. Any other comments on that one? I'll just say, I mean, we have a policy, staff rates these projects and bring them forward to us. So I have no problem in getting more information on this one because it is large. And that's what we're doing, our due diligence. But I would just point out that we do have a policy and staff are following it. Although there was one here that I don't think was a unanimous committee support of, but it was overall supported. But anyway, so we can agree to defer that one for now. So the next one is thirty-eight forty-eight Beckwood Street North. Of course, Council McGuire?
This one is a, so I'll, I'll try to entice Council McKenna and Robinson here to join me. But this one is a complete redo and it is stucco. And there's a lot of other materials they could be using that would be a premium material with an added cost that would justify taxpayer investment. And the bar isn't met for me on this one, so it's a no.
Any other comments on that?
It may not be quite ideal, but it's, the ten thousand ask leverages eighteen thousand dollars in work and, and a building that already needs some work. I'll support this one.
I agree with that. And I just prefaced my last comments that this has been vetted. So everybody else is okay? Okay. Eight is United Church.
I'm good with that.
Thumbs up. Wow. Okay, and finally Ease Chiropractic on William Street. Council McGuire?
So this one's got a great picture of why we don't use stucco like the last one. To me, it represents regular maintenance. There's been a snow removal or something's impacted it and it's failed and it needs to be fixed. And it's not, it shouldn't be up to the residents of Smith Falls to pay for that. I think the signage is great, except, like, I'm glad the box signs excluded, but for the sign on the side, that meets our standards. So I support funding that, but I don't support the stucco repair.
Thank you. Anybody else? Council McKenna?
It's just a question, can we support part of this and not the other part?
Probably.
So not to start, I like the sign support, so I would agree with Council McGuire.
We could piece out the stucco.
I would agree with Council McGuire.
Okay, and, and support the signs, whatever that, how that works out. Is everyone okay with that?
Okay.
Okay, so that's a partial. Made it. Okay, so that's good. Yes, Council McGuire?
Just a general comment on C I P for next year. If there's consensus of, or maybe we could have this conversation to it another time when Council Miller's back. Just if we could have a, I don't know, an update in the future of, of the committee and the policy and how we could tweak it to make it less contentious when it comes to council.
Yeah, because I don't, I don't think it's, it's that heartening when a committee member poses almost every one, every one of these. But anyway, so in, in summary, eighteen William is a yes. Eight twelve Main, no. Twelve Maple, no. Station Theater, yes. Two six Beckwith, yes. Eleven William is a deferral. Thirty-eight forty-eight Beckwood Street West is yes. And United Church is a yes. And the one three William is a partial, piecing out the sign. Okay, so we'll probably have to do a, a motion next council meeting on those ones and then the eleven William Street, we can talk about it another committee hall?
Correct.
Okay. Good, well done.
Thank you.
Excellent. Ten point three, our final tax rates. Treasure Dollar.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Council.
So this report, just to kind of lay the foundation.
So this report is just to kind of lay the foundation to establish the final tax rates based on the tax levy portion of revenue from the, from the budget process. It, the goal is to achieve that levy that we indicated in, in the budget process and also adds the levy portion for downtown for the DBA to come to the levy agreed upon by the, by the DBA Board. And as Council is aware, we passed the bylaw so that we have the ability legislatively to collect those taxes from residents, businesses, et cetera, of, of Smith Falls. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Any questions? Councilor McKenna?
Yeah, thank you, thank you, Director Dover. I was at a county council meeting last year and they brought up their rates and the same, same table, except that they had no deduction for vacancy. And they, they commented, somebody asked them, they said they thought other, some other municipalities are moving away from that. Do you have any, and I was just curious as to that. I understand why, but do you have any thoughts or comments? Is it a, there was a sense that it can entice, it doesn't motivate a landlord to lower their rates if they're getting a break on the taxes? And is it, any thoughts? I'm neutral on it, but.
Yeah, there's been a lot of discussion. I know in the past I've had that discussion as to whether it does entice commercial and industrial to stay residential. It's a thirty-five percent break on commercial and a forty percent break on, on industrial. I think I've got that right, or, or maybe I've flipped it around. There is some feelings that it does entice the landlords or the property owners to, to leave a portion vacant. I, I think, I think there's a lot of discussion, a lot of varying opinions on it. Usually is a bigger discussion in towns like Smith Falls or Perth or Crown Place where there is a lot of commercial because it, it tends to be more common within the commercial world, world where the industrial usually tends to, to try and take care of that vacancy as soon as possible. As far as opinions go, I, I don't really know what to say in that sense. We'd have to go back and kind of look at the historical, look at the numbers. And it would be interesting maybe to find out if, how long some of the vacancies have, have been vacant consistently without the breaks. So I, I think that in order to answer your question, we'd probably have to do a little bit more digging, in my opinion, before making a, a judgment call.
CEO Morris is coming.
Okay. Yes, so through the chair, so we, Smith Falls used to have a vacancy rebate program. It was phased out over time and it's completely gone at this point. The trend now is for municipalities to, to move towards a vacant penalty. If, if your buildings are vacant, you pay a higher rate or you pay a penalty of some sort to encourage them to either be filled or sold to someone that's going to fill them. So, so that, that was a policy we had, but we no longer have.
So then when I'm looking at the assessment type and it's got a different rate for vacant land and vacant units, is that just not relevant? And it's on the Schedule A?
Yes, that would be, that would be the thirty-five percent and the forty percent. Historically, that's, that I followed from the previous several years. If there was an opt-out to that program, I wasn't able to find evidence of that from previous tax.
And if I may, I'm not looking for more. I wouldn't want to be studied, but if there's some scholarly reports, somebody's looked at that and if there's an article you could refer to me, I'll, I'll do, I'll do some digging too, just to see what the, what the scholars or researchers are suggesting.
CEO Morrison.
Yeah, you raise a really good point. So we have two point three million in assessed value under vacant unit or excess land. My suspicion is it's the excess land portion of that because we don't, even if we, even if we had an assessment category for it, we don't provide a rebate on that, on that land. So, so we'll have to go back and have a look at that, but thank you for raising the.
Thank you, that's it, that's a very good point.
Thank you. So I, I'm supportive of once you get that clarified.
Okay.
We have to pay our bills, so we have to. So that'll come forward.
Tuesday.
Tuesday, next Tuesday. Thank you for that.
Thank you.
Okay, the big annual review of twenty twenty-four with CEO Morris.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Twenty twenty-four was a very productive year for the town of Smith Falls and we've captured most of what we did in terms of the big items in a ten-page concise annual report that I would encourage everyone to read. It's an easy six or seven-minute read. I would like to point out some of the big items that we accomplished for those that haven't seen the report or may not have a chance to look at it. We opened the thirty-four unit affordable housing building at forty-four chambers. That was a significant contribution to the housing shortage. Bridge House opened, the former Willowdale facility, providing homes for thirteen formerly homeless people. I think that's a tremendous accomplishment. In a general sense, all six strategic priorities that you've developed advanced measurably over the course of twenty twenty-four. George Street Phase One was complete. That was a, a big project, not in terms of aged infrastructure, but in terms of diverting stormwater where it should be and not to our wastewater treatment plant. Phase two is next week. We hope to, we'll bring forward a recommendation to award the work. The, the crossing of the canal at Confederation Drive was approved last year. And of course, we heard just last week that that's moving ahead. We completed the Canal District Revitalization Plan, so that's going to pave the way for former industrial property, the Frost and Wood property, to be redeveloped one day into something that could be absolutely stunning. It's a beautiful piece of property that needs some investment, so we have a blueprint for that. We installed accessible play equipment at Highland Corbett Park. I think that's a remarkable achievement in an area where we haven't invested heavily. We planted trees, the mini forest is in that area as well. I had an opportunity last week to drive by and I was delighted to see several parents and probably twelve to fifteen children using the play structure. So that was reassuring that I think Council made the right decision there. We issued a hundred and four building permits and the value of the construction total was seventeen point four million. So that's not an insignificant contribution or investment in our community. And lastly, but certainly not least, Johnny Harris came to town and confirmed we are still standing. So that was a lot of fun, great exposure, it was completely free. And, and I think it kind of captured the spirit of Smith Falls. So all in all, it was a great year. I would encourage people to read the report.
Thank you. Comments or questions? It is, of course, Councilor McKenna.
Well, I can't. I, I just want to say when in two thousand seventeen, as I was retiring out of my old and, and thinking about growing into municipal, and I, I knew some of how it worked, but not a lot. And one of the reasons I decided to do this was because there was a strategic plan. There was a vision. I understood that there was money being put aside for capital projects over the coming years. And it, what I thought might happen has actually come true with, with good planning and, and good staff and patience and moving these projects with a long-term plan, you can accomplish so much. So looking back, not just last year, but over the last eight or ten years, just remarkable what a smaller community can do by pulling together. So I just, these are really important documents, reflection back. And anybody considering running next year, finalize yourself with these long-range master plans and, or if there is a plan and strategies, then they do work with great effectiveness. So I just, compliments to have on that.
Yeah. I'll echo that. I mean, when I, when I came here, I think as year Hershey was gone, the original was gone. But then in the following years strategically, we re, redeveloped the hospital, redeveloped an arena, had a new high school put in, so that just boosted our, our image and we were, we're no longer down and out. So thi- this document is really good. And I'll just ask CEO Morris, it's available here at the Town Hall in hard copy?
Yes, it will be. We'll print a limited number. Last year we found there wasn't a big demand for the printed version, but we will have.
Have some, yeah.
And it's a very modest cost to, to do that.
That's important to do, I think. Okay, thank you. Ten point five is with Clerk Castello, amending provincial funding agreement for Small Business Center.
Thank you. Bringing forward a request this evening for Council to pass an amended funding agreement with the, for the Small Business Advisory Center. This ministry has developed a new streamlined financial monitoring process that reduces the administrative burdens for the small business centers. And this does require amendment to the current agreement we have with them. The proposed changes can lead to direct audit savings and reduce time spent by the assisting auditors. Very, a minor amendment, but considering that the original agreement came to Council, we need to bring this forward as an amending bylaw.
Thumbs up all around. Well done. Okay, finally, waiving encroachment agreement fee request for the DBA Association Parquet with Councilor Miller.
Thank you. Thanks for letting me speak to this. DBA was here just a couple of weeks ago, so I wanted to save them the trip and coming back. They made a proposal about upgrading our town's parquet on Russell Street. It's a beautiful space, but the sunshine makes it almost unusable in the summertime. So part of what they're looking to do is put a new shade structure there and some other smaller upgrades. At the time of their presentation, they didn't know and hadn't flushed out some of those details. There may possibly be a requirement for an encroachment bylaw, which comes with a three hundred dollar fee. They will know more about that in the next day or two after consulting with staff and they have a board meeting tomorrow night. But for the small amount, I just wanted to bring it forward tonight and just get your approval that if they have to go that route, that we would waive that fee for them.
Councilor McKenna?
Well, just a question through your chairs to staff, I guess is, I guess why? Why, why this group and not any other group? I think I know why, but I, I always worry about precedent or favoring one group over another and other fees. So I just want to make sure that we're, I, I don't mind supporting the waving of it, but I don't, just need to understand why this group and not any other group.
McKenna?
Not staff now.
Yeah, so through the chair, I, I think the distinction here is that it's a contribution to a public space that the public will use. And the DBA happens to be spearheading it because they, they have some good ideas. So the reason for the encroachment permit is if anything's in the right of way, we need to make sure it's documented. And, and if it's a third party, it's a liability protection for the town. So really the question at this point that we'll collectively answer is will the structure be owned by the town? If it is, we don't need an encroachment permit. If it's owned by others like the DBA, we would need the permit.
Support of that, thank you.
Yep. Everyone thumbs up. Good job. Committee, Board, External Organization Updates? None. No information correspondence items, no orders, motion. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. The committee adjourns its proceedings at six twenty-four P M. And stands so adjourned until the next duly called committee meeting. Councilor Robinson, seconded by Councilor Miller, all in favor?